Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Monday, November 4th. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Mathias, can you please take the roll?
Okay. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Mathias is present. Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Shadke.
Here.
President Grant.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Two, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we will get started. We have a celebration this evening?
Absolutely. Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask John Helmhold to come forward. He will be discussing our Student Advancement Foundation donations.
All right. Madam President, Superintendent Gorman, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here tonight with Sally, the new, not-so-new executive director of Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation, and Max Gibbs, who's been longstanding GRPS employee advocate, member of the Student Advancement Foundation Board. We're here to talk and to celebrate the longstanding partnership with our exclusive fundraising partner, the Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation. Sally's going to talk a little bit about the total amount, but not including the physical wellness portion, there's more than $352,000 that's been raised by the Student Advancement Foundation in the five areas around arts, environment, math, science, technology, and literacy. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Sally.
President Grant, Dr. Gorman, members of the committee, thank you so much for having us here today. For those of you who don't know me, I am new, okay? So I'm going to hold on to that for two years. We so appreciate this wonderful relationship that we have with GRPS and for the opportunity to work with you. This year, SAF, all totals included, including the physical wellness, we will be handing over $900,000 to Grand Rapids Public Schools. That has broken down to $200,000 in grant funding from SAF, $550,000 that Great Sports is raising as they go this year for the Great Sports program and for athletics, and $152,000 in programs that are existing and that we're going to be putting to work for Grand Rapids Public Schools. This will be a really exciting year for Student Advancement Foundation. On April 29th, we will be going into our rebrand, and we are so excited to share this with you. I could tell you now, but then I'd, you know, it's a steep secret. It's the best kept. So, but we can't wait for you to see it because I think it'll really bring alignment between our organizations. I'm also excited because your 150th birthday is coming up next year, and we're going to celebrate it starting off on July 4th with City High, who were helping to fund their trip to Washington DC. They will be marching down Pennsylvania Avenue with a banner that says, "Celebrating 150 Years of the Grand Rapids Public Schools." So, we're excited, we're building the committee, we're building programs. It's going to be a great celebration. The city, the mayor, everybody's on board with this. So, happy birthday next year, and thank you for this opportunity. There's a little book right here, and I want to give a big shout out to Alex Watson, who works with John. We worked together to really come up with something to show the impact that we've had last year. So this is just a brief overview of what we've done. I love this piece. We're taking it out to all of our donors. I hope you enjoy reading it. And that's it for me. Thank you again for this opportunity, and we so appreciate being able to work with you. Max?
I just want to add a few words to all those wonderful things that she mentioned and that we're doing, is to thank you as board members. With our big luncheon a few weeks ago with 580 people there, raising $100,000 at one lunch, and thank you for being table captains, thank you for bringing your friends, because that money that you help us raise, we get to turn right back over to you to help your job to be a little easier as we help with programs and supplies and the needs for our students. And what a privilege it is to sit here tonight as part of that organization, and we will continue to raise money, and next year's number hopefully will be higher. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on, I do just want to say thank you to the Student Advancement Foundation. They work so hard for our students all across the district to make sure that all of our schools feel supported, so thank you very much. I believe that we do have public comment for aborting agenda items?
Yes, we do. If Gemma can come at this time, and as you know, you'll have three minutes to share with us.
Está bien que hablen español?
Is it okay? Yeah?
Gracias. Si, mi nombre es Gemma Low. Yo soy una mamá que mi hija va a la escuela de Southwest Community Campus. Y primero que bueno ver diversidad en la mesa directiva, ¿verdad? Que refleje los papás y los hijos que van a la escuela. Estoy aquí porque escuché que van a votar acerca de aprobar que las escuelas públicas de Grand Rapids estén en favor de licencias de conducir para todos, una legislación, y que eso influye en seguridad y también dignidad para los papás de nuestros estudiantes. Y también quisiera proponerles o preguntarles que si están dispuestos a hacer más que eso y aconsejar a otros directivas de alrededor que también hagan lo mismo, ¿verdad? Porque así es como la comunidad se une y podemos mejorar nuestra comunidad. My name is Gemma Low. I am a parent. My daughter was to Southwest Community Campus, and I'm here, I'm glad to see so much diversity in the board, and it reflects the parents and the students that goes to Grand Rapids Public Schools. What I'm here for is that I'm glad to hear that you would adopt a position on driver's license for all in the state of Michigan, and it will send a message to a community that you care about the safety and the dignity of the parents that, you know, they are for Grand Rapids Public Schools. And then I would like to also see, you know, how the board will influence and be a champion for other boards, school boards in other districts to champion this position, because that's how community and school comes together. You know, how many parents go to the events after school? You know, there are barriers to do that, and then we know there are students, if they have other activities besides school, are more likely to succeed. So encouraging other school districts and boards will, you know, will help the community better. I don't know if my time is over, but I did it in two languages. You have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We also have our reports from our student representatives. Let's start with Ms. Benson.
Okay. I have four celebrations to share from City. We have a new club at City called City Service. They do service projects around Grand Rapids and around City. They're hosting a new event called Thrift, where City students can bring in old clothes, and they have the opportunity to give away their clothing and also have an alternative to throwing away their clothing, so they have a sustainable opportunity to share clothing with each other. It's a free event, and we're also going to be incorporating our house system into this event, so the house that brings in the most amount of clothing will win a prize. And our house system is, our school is divided up into four groups, and these four groups compete against each other, and it builds team unity. Our second celebration is that on Thursday, City High Band had a parade at Palmer Elementary. I'm in the band, and I also went to Palmer, so it was great to see the students' faces. They're very excited. Our third celebration is that there is a Sound of Music production at City High on November 15th, 16th, and 17th. If you'd like to represent our, or like to support our students, come see that. Lastly, I have a sports celebration. City High students represented Ottawa Hills cross-country team at the Michigan International Speedway. We have Adit Dao, who finished seventh at regionals, and Naomi finished 13th, which allowed them both an opportunity to compete at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phil Mincho.
All right. Good evening to you all. I am here to share three celebrations that happened at Innovation Central. First being coding for Moore Conference. About 30 GRPS students, middle and high schoolers, came to Central for a Friday and Saturday session to learn how to code robots, as well 3D printing, and as well as to learn how to design apps. And the financial support came from Spectrum Health, Priority Health, and Bravo LT. Another celebration is that Innovation Central took their, a group of Latinx students, to MSU Latino Day. We were able to get a college tour, as well as a presentation as to what programs and organization big universities have for minority groups, so I thought it was really cool. Our last fun activity that we had was our Cooper'sville Exchange Day. 30 students from Cooper'sville came, and they lived the day at Innovation Central as a student, and next semester, we will be sending 30 students to Cooper'sville, so that we will be able to learn from other districts and schools and other students.
Thank you. That's all very interesting. Next, we have our secretary's report.
We do have a board committee meeting scheduled. The academic committee meeting will be meeting this Wednesday in the board chambers at the Grand Rapids Public School Administration Building, and I believe it's at 4:30. It wasn't here, but it, I know that it is.
Ms. Lewis knows when it's at.
And then September 5th, there is no school. There will be no school for students on Tuesday, November 5th, due to Professional Development Day for staff, so.
Okay. That means that my junior was telling the truth.
Yes.
Okay. Now for committee chair updates. We have finance committee.
Yeah, finance did meet last week. We go today. We presented with some of the updates in regards to September financials, warm, safe, and dry bond construction, but it was really nothing of, you know, particular note in that regard. I will say, we did have, on a purchasing agenda, well, associated with the purchasing agenda at least, there was conversation about the contract for the FACS Educational Solutions. If my memory corrects, it's clear, and maybe one of the other members can clarify for me, I thought we left that with some information that administration would bring back before we brought it for a vote, or am I, is my memory messing with me?
I think we were talking about the contract for the Applied Linguistic Center.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that was the item. Okay, I apologize. So yeah, so the FACS piece, I guess, you know, that was, that was not area known, and we did pull the other thing from the purchasing agenda there. But again, there was really nothing of any particular note, other than pulling the one item for some language services piece, that we just wanted some clarification from administration as far as how that contract was vetted, and if there were other potential vendors out there that we did vet before bringing that to the board. Aside from that, though, it was pretty much what you see in your packet, and nothing particular, no, please.
Yeah, I think to expand on that, the broader question was, when we have issues like this, are they properly vetted through the academic committee, or another committee, whatever committee is particularly responsible for that area? You know, if we're going to enter into contracts, you know, with providers and their substantial dollars, then we need to make sure that they have, in fact, come to those appropriate committees of the board.
No. Thank you for clarifying. Yes. Yeah, that was it. Any questions or additional clarification? Thank you, sir, about that issue, or anything in the finance pack? So I guess, Dr. Baker, I see you looking a bit confused when we talked about...
Yeah, a little bit, although I know that President Grant and Dr. Gorman, we've talked about how to vet things through both committees and board working.
So I think in this particular case, the, what Dr. Flores is speaking to is, this particular tool was an academic-related tool, and his, he raised having a, maybe not having a comfortable as a finance committee, to ensure that the academic achievement committee had at least had some critical conversation with administrative folks, that that indeed may be the best available tool.
That does fit with the format that we were, it's just that we're adjusting to doing it that way.
Yeah, so I think it's wonderful that the finance committee is thinking like that. I know that there will be times that policy committee needs to be looped in, and so it's just really good to see all of our committees communicating. There are times that things will rise out of those committees, and legislative committee will want to look at, like, is there a stance that we put in place? So it's great to see the committees communicating. Next, we have a legislative committee update.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. The legislative committee met last week, Monday, as well. We do have two action items later on, on board positions, so I'm going to save discussion on those two items until we're ready to take action, but would be happy to provide the overview of the rest of the meeting. So we were provided with a legislative update focused, of course, on the new school aid budget. The news there for Grand Rapids Public Schools is the per pupil funding has been increased, which is great news. We're looking at $8,111 per student. That equates to an increase in net revenue of about $3.5 to $3.8 million for Grand Rapids Public Schools. Good news, of course, for us, but good news for public education, as we continue to see our state government and our legislators put a focus on the value of public education and how we need to support our students. We had a discussion on shared time. That has long been a conversational point for our legislators. Right now, there's been no changes to shared time. Of course, a reminder that shared time, excuse me, is how we deliver non-core instructional courses to children outside of Grand Rapids Public Schools. So we share instructional time with schools like Grand Rapids Christian or Grand Rapids Catholic Schools. And so we know that there may be some pressures on the budget in the future years, and so we're just keeping a watchful eye on what our governor and the legislator are thinking in relation to shared time, as that, of course, will have an impact on us. And then we also discussed Michigan merit curriculum flexibility. That's another one that's been out there for some time. Senator Bumstead has introduced a bill to increase the flexibility. That, of course, is in line with our GRPS legislative platform. We are in favor of local control over how our students are educated, so we'll be watching that bill as well. And the other two that we'll discuss and take position on tonight are around the strict discipline academy changes and licenses for all, so we'll comment on those later on. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Bridget Chaney to come forward. She'll be speaking this evening about the read-by-grade-three legislation and the many ways we are bringing awareness to this particular legislation. Ms. Chaney?
Good evening, Madam President. Dr. Gorman, distinguished members of the board, thanks for having me up here this evening. We had quite the discussion at the board work session about the third grade legislation around promotion of our students and what all that entails, and the resources that we're providing, and the different things that we can do at school, but also what parents can do at home. So I'm very excited tonight to let you know that we have an updated portion of our website that is very robust with information and activities for parents to do at home. It is the third banner from the left, if you pull up grps.org, and it's very exciting because it has different subcategories there. So it has a parent guide, so what does the law mean for me if I'm a parent, right, and my child, if I have a third grader? What exactly does my child need to do? What do I need to do at home? And what are the exemptions, or good cause exemptions, as we talk about? How is it that if perhaps my child does not meet the cut score, or that 1252 on the M-step, they can still perhaps be promoted? So that information is all there, taking out the legalese as best we could to make it very parent-friendly, because the law is extremely lengthy and has lots of information there within. The next portion is, how do I support my child at home? What are some things I can do at home? What questions do I ask my child when I'm reading with, or my child is reading to me? And then we have another portion that is the digital and text resources. So what are some things that I can access, either on my smartphone, tablet, go to the public library and access, if I may perhaps not have some of these things at my house? We have things such as book lists for each grade level, so if I go to the public library, what books may I want to check out with my child? It has the directions for how to use the online library portion, so that is fantastic for parents at home and kids to use. And there are also sightword lists, too. So if I have a kindergartner at home, how can I begin now, instead of waiting until third grade to attack some of these skills? So that is on there. And then the last thing, subcategory that is there, which we're so super excited about, this Wednesday, at Campus Elementary kicks off our parent informational meetings. A few years ago, we hosted four meetings across the city, one in each quadrant, to talk about what is the third grade legislation, Public Act 306, and what are some things that I can be proactive about? And now that it is here, we're holding public meetings once per month across the city from now until March, and it will be just that, what does the legislation mean to me? Really breaking it down for parents, allowing for an open discussion at the end of questions, what reports can I ask my school for if I do not already have them? And we have great parent packages for them to take home. So it has the sightword list, the book list, a couple of books in there for kids to read, and they are sorted by grade level. So whatever grade level the child is, they can take home with them. So 6 o'clock, Campus Elementary, right over there. Please, I'll be hosting it, so please join me. Super exciting. Ms. Downs-Lewis, you've been to them before, when we hosted at Aberdeen, and it's really fun, it's a great time, and it's really great to know the questions that parents have about this legislation that we'll be able to address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask John Helmhold to come forward this evening. He will be discussing the Grand Rapids Parks Millage and also the U.S. 2020 Census.
All right. Again, Madam President, Dr. Gorman, members of the board, I'm here tonight with David Marquardt, the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Grand Rapids. I kind of feel like I work for David these days, because we've got so many exciting projects, from the cities connecting children to nature, where we were one of seven cities in this, in the country, selected to look at how to activate green schoolyards and environmental education. We worked together on our Joint Use Agreement, which is a very unique national model that we're, how we worked together literally 50 years ago to this day, and then most recently, with the Thrive Outside, we're one of four cities in the nation to receive this grant. So I'm pleased to share with you that, from the school district and from the City of Grand Rapids, we work hand in glove to advance access and equity for schoolyards, for our parkland, and to ensure that there's, we're activating our parkland and our green spaces for students, our families, all ages. Tonight, David's going to talk a little bit about where we were with the Parks Millage a few years ago to where we are tonight on the eve of the election. There's a big vote tomorrow on the Parks Millage renewal and enhancement investment. So, David?
Thank you, John. Good morning. Good morning. I'm used to saying good morning to commissioners. Good evening, board members. David Marquardt, Director of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation. Not only is this just a very brief update on the Parks Millage, but also a chance to say thank you, thank you for your support, and thank you for your partnership in the work that we've been able to do. 2013, voters approved a Parks Millage, dedicated Parks Millage generates about $4 million a year. Over a seven-year period, we'll be investing about $28 million. To date, we've invested about $20 million in the city's park system, and because of this dedicated funding, we have been able to leverage local, state, and federal grant funding and private philanthropic funding to the tune of about $14 million, which is rather impressive. Projects are new, projects are building on old park amenities that need replacement, but we're doing some first things for Grand Rapids as well. Ottawa Hills Park is a prime example. This was one of Grand Rapids' very first fully accessible and universally accessible play spaces in Grand Rapids. This is thanks in part to a partnership with Grand Rapids Public Schools in the land donation and swap that was made for this project to make it feasible. Another first is the Plaster Creek Family Park. We had a sneak peek back in September, when the weather was glorious and warm and sunny, thank goodness. But this is another first in that Children and Nature Network work that we are doing with the cities and the schools. Here, we were able to invest not only Park Millage dollars, but some funding from the Wegi Foundation, and some outside funding from the National Recreation and Park Association to build one of Grand Rapids' first nature-based play spaces. So everything within this play space comes from our old trees and wood that we harvest from the city's forestry department, that has been implemented into this incredible park space that will open up next spring. So tomorrow night, John mentioned, we've got, it's Election Day, and on the ballot is a proposal for a renewal and increase for the Parks Millage funding. Currently, we're at about 0.98 mills for the seven-year period, and the proposal is for 1.25 mills in perpetuity. That would generate about $5 million a year. Currently, we're generating about $4 million per year with the current Parks Millage. For the average homeowner, this would equate to about $68 a year, or a little over $5 a month. The funding would go toward a continuation of park capital improvements, but also supplement some of our maintenance and operations work, keeping our pools and splash pads open and operational. But it would also begin to supplement some of our recreational programming to increase our ability to offer more free and reduced-price programming for residents of Grand Rapids. So thank you for your support, thank you for your partnership. We're doing great things together.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. I'm going to stay right where I am at. Thank you. Well, continuing on here, I'm pleased to be joined by Lou Canfield, who is the manager of the Development Center, and the lucky, or some may say otherwise, individual assigned by the city manager to head up the Census 2020 campaign, and then Kathy Harris, who is our somewhat new census coordinator. I also work for both of them, it seems, so we've had just a great opportunity working together since Mayor Bliss called the Complete Counts Committee together and began organizing our city. We, obviously, the outcome of the census determines the level of federal funding that we get for our city, and the schools are among the highest funded based on the count. So we, as a school system, have a vested interest in the outcome of the census this next year, and I'm going to turn it over to Lou and Kathy to kind of take it away.
All right. Thank you, John, and good evening. Believe it or not, the 2020 Census count starts less than five months from today, so it feels to us like we've been working on it for about five years, I think, but it is coming soon, less than five months from now, and it's critical for reasons that you probably know. It's, the data that comes out of the census count is used for things like apportionment of congressional seats among the states, the data feeds into the redistricting process, and then, as John mentioned, I think it's critical for schools and the city, is there's a very large amount, nearly $700 billion, of population-based funding that is allocated under various grant programs according to census data. So, John, if you go to the next slide, you can see that these funds add up to about $18,000 per person counted over 10 years. We go with 10 years, of course, because the census happens just once a decade. And a lot of money for healthcare, a lot of money for nutrition, including school nutrition programs, and then, of course, education, training, housing, and families. So even though not all of the money is flowing to education and training programs, you can see that these services support students and their families. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the census count begins soon, and the city has what we're calling the Complete Count Effort. We have a Complete Count Committee that consists of about 70 community leaders, and we also have some staff who have been added to support this effort. So the city commission approved, as part of the current year budget, $100,000 specifically for census, you might say, get-out-the-census-type activities, and that is augmented by about $200,000 that the United Way has awarded in many grants to many different community organizations. So we're in this awareness phase, where what we're really focused on is ed- So we're in this awareness phase where what we're really focused on is education, getting the word out in the community. And then, as you can see in the right-hand column, the invitation for people to respond online will be sent out in mid-March. Online is not the only option, but this is the first census with an online option. It's one of the challenges that we face is helping people to understand how to do this and providing some assistance when needed. But then, if people don't respond online, they will receive eventually a paper questionnaire. Next slide, please, John. We are particularly focused on historically hard-to-count communities. So there are some in Grand Rapids. And they tend to be geographically concentrated, but they're also defined by people with young children, people with lower socioeconomic status and means, people who move frequently, people who rent. And so we're very focused on helping those groups in particular understand the importance of the census, when it's coming, and how they can participate. In the right-hand column, you can see about 70% of people identify one of these reasons as the most important reason to respond to the census. So it helps determine funding for public services, the ones we just talked about. Many say it's my civic duty to participate, and many say it contributes to a better future for my community. So you add those together, it's about 70%, and that's the message we're trying to get across. Kathy?
Good evening. So as, excuse me, as your Census coordinator, can you hear me? Okay. As your Census coordinator, I've been hired through the city to find those hard-to-reach communities. And, forgive my voice, I think I talk too much. I'm sorry. But my responsibility is to reach out to those hard-to-reach communities. And so with the help of our ambassadors, and two of them are in the audience, and they would just stand, Ruben?
Ruben.
And Gennaro, and Lanell Allen. We have one that's not here. Ruben, is Ruben here?
Yes.
Where? I mean, not Ruben. Raoul, I'm sorry. Raoul, I'm sorry. Raoul Velasco, he's not here tonight. But the three of them I've been helping and talking to and communicating with the community. So my responsibility is to find those places, and then I ask them to go out and reach out to them. And in doing that, we have, I'm going to pass these documents around. I didn't bring one for everybody, but I did bring it to share with the board. We met with several committees. We have a Complete Media Account Committee, Media Subcommittee. We have the Marketing Committee, our stakeholders meetings, wherever I can reach out to and talk to them and get information so that I can reach out to the communities. So having those various committees have helped me tremendously with finding places and coming together with ideas and just kind of sending us out in the community to do what we need to do. I think I'm kind of jumping around. Those documents that we're sharing are the documents that we're sharing with the community. We are creating it as we go with the various organizations so that they can have something that relates to their community. So the people that they work with can look back and say, well, this organization is working with the committee, the Census Committee, and they can relate to it. And we want them to feel comfortable and trust the process.
Ready for the next?
I'm ready for the next, I think.
I just want to add to that. Really, Kathy and her team have been very intentional in trying to customize every one of these materials, with photos, with different languages, and really that hands-on, everywhere they can be where there's a group, especially the harder to count, she's been out there with her team and have done a really remarkable job.
Thank you. We have found areas where we need to have material translated. So as you see, when you see the documents, we have it in five languages. So far, we've created actually seven languages. The other two are in process, English, Swahili, Kenyatta, Nepali. Help me out. Burmese, and Spanish. And, you know, as we go, and people can't, if they can't read the material, then we do what we need to do so that they can read it. So we've worked with translators in various areas to help us get the material, make sure that it's correct before we present it to their community. So we're working really hard and trying to reach out to them. We also are working with the Census, the government, to help with workers. They have a responsibility to have 4,000 employees in Kent County to help with the census in March or by March. So as the documents come out, as the forms come out, they need to have people knocking on doors. Excuse me. And so in doing that, we're helping them with hiring, hiring the community. What better person would you want coming to your door than somebody that you can relate to? And we feel that having, the Rwanda community, they need to have their people coming to them. They can communicate better than having me coming to them and not be able to speak their language. So we're trying to make that happen. So as we go out and speak to different groups, we also include our Census Worker Recruiter Team to go along with us. Or we at least invite them to go with us so that they can hire or make the offer to that community for employment.
We've also identified all the students that will be 18 years of age or older as opportunities for employment. And so we're going to be working on communicating out with our families and our students about opportunities for employment, as well as the, obviously, the importance of the census.
So you're part of this. We're asking you to participate. If any of you know of any events, anything that's coming up that we can participate in, please email myself. My email is there on the screen, where you can contact our office. But please follow us on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. I think you can communicate that way. I'm not Facebooker, so I don't know how to do it, but I know it can be done. So we're asking that you let us know what's going on in your areas. It doesn't matter what side of town you're on. If you're in Grand Rapids, we want to meet with your team. So our leadership is coming together with putting all this information and working together and helping with all of this. So we need your part as a school board and the parents to please work with us on doing so.
And that's it. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. This evening, we have several action items. The first item is a resolution to ratify collective bargaining agreements for GRA C E N and GR P S P A. Do we have anyone who?
If you, Larry Oberst, please come forward.
We don't need all the context. It's not just facts. Good evening, President Grant, Dr. Gorman, and members of the school board. I believe in your PAC, and I think it came late. It's a bullet point summary of two of the six collective bargaining agreements that we have settled over the last couple of weeks. The first being the paraprofessional group, which is kind of their own independent union. And just to reiterate some of the highlights on that, on that handout you have. And again, much like the bargaining a couple of years ago, there's, every one of these unions we have have some different, unique needs. And so we certainly try to, not try, we do bargain to the specific needs and try to address some of those things. So as related to the, to the paraprofessionals, there are a couple of things that they wanted in terms of the compensation arrangement that's to move some more tenured people up with step increases. We could not give 40 of step increases across the board. So we did give several step increases to those employees that were 20, had 20 years or more that were not in the top step. We moved them to the top step. We did increase the compensation on steps for Step 1 and Step 2. Those were low, and as we continue to compete in this competitive labor market, we made some adjustments there. We did give a, we have a longevity payment that's made for those that, and then there's various steps to that in terms of how long you've been here. We raised each of those, I believe, five categories of longevity, about $100 each. Play property damage that we will reimburse for any property damage went from $50 to $200. And the hard cap rates, which go into effect on January 1st, we agreed to increase those on January 1st, the state hard cap rates. And those hard cap rates went up about 2% overall. We're in the process right now of our open enrollment for next year, so we won't know the exact mix of plans chosen by any of our groups until after the end of our open enrollment. On the Grayson side, the Grayson are childcare workers, our LPNs, and OT and PT assistants. And for that group, it was a two-year agreement, I forgot to mention that also, the parapro group, a two-year agreement. We gave a step increase to everybody, but no increases on the steps. For those in the top step, they got a $500 flat stipend, if you will. You can see some of the other adjustments there. The working hours were adjusted for 7.25 hours to 7.5 per day. That's by virtue, really, that's kind of what they've been working and making adjustments. We just increased that required. Much like the, just like the parapros, we increased property damage from $50 to $200. Hard cap rates that go into effect in January 1st were also granted. And then we did make a change in the vision frame allowance for this group. It was, I believe, $65. We increased that to $135 annually. And that was just a minimal increase in additional premiums on our part for that. So those are the highlights. Both of these proposals have been ratified by the respective groups. And we just need your ratification tonight to put these things, put these changes in effect.
Do we have any questions or any clarifications that are needed? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to ratify the collective bargaining agreements for these two groups?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave...
I will stay put for, in case there's more questions.
Next, we have our purchasing agenda. While we have Mr. Oberst here, are there any questions or clarifications that are needed? Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. Next, we have the Fax Education Solutions LLC contract. Do we have any questions or clarification needed around that? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Fax Education Solutions LLC contract?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
We have our financial audit acceptance. Do we have any discussion around that?
Let me just mention, Ms. Grant, that as I indicated in our work session on October 21st, the final audit reports, which were in your PAC, did not change from what you reviewed, when I reviewed with you on the 21st. So we just need you to formally accept the final report tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the financial audit acceptance or to accept the financial audit?
Motion to approve the financial audit? Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm done here.
Next, I believe we will call Mr. Helmhold up. Our next item is the Board Position on Strict Discipline Academies. Mr. Helmhold, would you like to give an introduction?
Sure. Yeah. And this one's somewhat unique in the sense that, as you'll hear me say, this really doesn't have a direct impact on Grand Rapids Public Schools because we provide the Tier 3 supports. We are rich in supporting our students. We have a comprehensive alternative education program. But State Representative Lynn F. Endulis brought this to our attention. And as a board, our, from a district standpoint, we want to do right by all kids. And so the concept here is there are several smaller districts that simply do not have the Tier 3 supports. These are for students who are, for various reasons, are on the brink of suspension or long-term suspension or expulsion. And this provides a support referral opportunity from a superintendent to refer a student for these Tier 3 support services at a strict discipline academy. Lighthouse Academy is essentially the one that's here in town. But again, this is not Grand Rapids Public Schools. We have Beckwith. We have other options within our district. But we know this is a tool that districts have asked for. And in many cases, there are districts that simply are not as resource-rich as we are in providing the Tier 3 support services. So we see this as good policy, good for students, and good to ensure that they have all the tools in the shed to ensure they're getting the supports they need so they can succeed and graduate.
Yeah, thank you, John. And your academic team reviewed the bill as well and made recommendations.
That's right. And we took it and we referred it to our academic team. Particularly Laura Lamore looked at it, threw them a special education lens, and said, really, that's what formulated the, this is doing right by kids, which is why we would get behind it and support this legislation.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments or questions?
Just to reiterate, so again, I know our public may not understand that we provide these kinds of services. When a student is expelled, for example, there are services so that they can continue to get their education and sort of not drop out or fall through the cracks. Is that...
That's absolutely correct. This, for some districts, though, they don't have those options. Therefore, a referral from the superintendent to a strict discipline academy would be allowed in this situation. As of right now, that student right now doesn't get those services at a strict discipline until after they've been suspended or after they've been expelled. So this provides a little bit more advanced support to kind of help catch and support the child before they are suspended or expelled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the Board Position for Strict Discipline Academies?
Motion for approval?
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have the Board Position on Licenses for All.
All right. I'll continue. This was an opportunity, President Grant had reached out and had conversations in the community where there was encouragement for the school board to look at this issue. As we know, our friends at City Hall, they penned a letter to the governor. They took a position on it. And so we did some research and wanted to look into this. And again, as with everything, we vet it through your platform, through your guiding principles, and we're asking that, is this doing right by kids? Is this something that's going to support our students' achievement, their success, their family, and their family's success? We looked at the National Council of State Legislatures that shows that 13 other states have adopted similar legislation that would provide for special driver's license for individuals who may not have the documentation. There has, there are certainly procedures that are followed. But we, again, believe this is the right thing to ensure that the students can get to and from school if their parents may be deriving them, that they may have access to quality health care services, after-school programming, athletic events that many students may participate in, parents who want to volunteer and need to have an ID... This is not the first time it's been introduced, but it's certainly got energy and some energy and momentum. We make thank you to Hema and the advocates at Cosecha who've been out front on this issue, advocating with City Hall. And we brought it before Legislative Committee, and the committee is recommending approval by the full board.
First of all, I'd just like to thank you, President Grant, John, and the Legislative Committee. It's really fantastic that we can have this, find a way to contribute to this movement. And I, it makes me proud to be part of Grand Rapids Public Schools. You know, I was thinking on the way over here what I could say to advocate for this, and then Ms. Malo, you know, her words were pretty special. And I think that, I know her, and for years, I know Cosecha is about advocating for the safety and dignity of the families of this community. And when she said, "This is a great example of how community schools come together," this is, that's really what we are about. And I think that this is who our community is now, and we have to be making decisions and advocating for ways that bring our community together and improve the lives of the people in our community. And this is who we are as Grand Rapids Public Schools. So, I hope that everyone supports it, and I feel great about the fact that we're addressing it.
I would also like to comment that this is an issue that affects more than just one community. We have students from around the world who are a part of our student population, and some of them look like me, some of them look like the communities that Cosecha represents. But they all deserve to feel safe and as if they belong. Their parents deserve to be able to walk into our school buildings and be able to volunteer and be able to be fully engaged in their students' education. So, once community members explained to me exactly what this meant to them, as John said, it aligned with what we say we are about, and it felt like something that we needed to advocate for.
Do you have any other comments?
Well, I think, I think as a school district, we serve. And so, as a district, we serve all kinds of students and families. And so, this would, yeah, you're right, this aligns with our values of serving who is in front of us. We could talk politics all we want, but we have to deal with who's in front of us, and then serve them to the best of our ability. So, I think that this accomplishes that.
One question earlier was, if approved, how would we communicate this? And we will, we will send communications to the entire West Michigan delegation, to the governor's office, and then this Friday, we are part of the West Michigan Talent Triangle, which is Ottawa ISD, Muskegon ISD, Kent ISD, and all the school districts under those three ISDs where we give legislative updates and will be sharing our legislative platform if approved, this new position.
I'd like to certainly congratulate also the Legislative Committee, and it is a proud moment to be in Grand Rapids. You know, Grand Rapids Public Schools has always been out in the forefront of equity issues, as I've witnessed over the years. And for us to take on a position like this and approve it, I think, is definitely laudable. And certainly, congratulations to Cosecha and all of the individuals who made this possible and continue to advocate for this. I think as a board, we though need to be even more proactive. There is an opposition group out there, and there are legislators in our state legislature, and we need to communicate to them how important this is to keep our road safe for issues of humanity, the fact that we have a population that continues to contribute to our communities across the state, and yet, they're denied the basic privilege of driving. They're going to be here. We're not going to deport everyone. Even though there's an effort to do so, it's just an impossible task. We need to recognize that time will heal this situation that they have and approve this, but to do so also with assertive attitude of, and actions of encouraging other school districts to do the same and other cities to do the same. I think that Grand Rapids is now on track, and we certainly are on track.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the board position on licenses for all? So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schadke?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
We have two discussion items for this evening. The first is the superintendent search update. I believe that all of my colleagues received the official calendar from the search firm. Please let Julie know if you have not received that. But for the community, we have confirmed our schedule for the superintendent search process. Those dates and times, locations, will be updated and posted for the community. As we go through the process, we will continue the same procedures that we had in place during the first search, which would include open meetings. We will be encouraging the community to join us, especially when we get to the interview process. It will be open. We are trying to make, we have set the times, and we've tried to have the community in mind for each of those times so that you are out of work and on the weekends, so that you can come and weigh in. We want to hear from the community, just like we did last time. So there will also be live streaming of our interviews. There will be the open email address where you can provide comments and feedback in forms. There will be community meetings for whoever the finalists are to meet with members of the community, to meet with administration, to meet with staff, so that we are weighing your feedback in through this process. So, just wanted to make sure that we shared that information, and we look forward to having you involved and joining us. The next item that we have is a statement and a position of sorts on KISD, and specifically on oversight and accountability. This Friday, information was shared with colleagues about personnel issue and an issue with Kickstand Edify that is going on with the Kent ISD. And so, as a board, we do have a brief statement stating that regarding the Kent Intermediate School District Assistant Superintendent William Smith and the Kickstand Edified Educational Venture, on October 22nd, 2019, the East Grand Rapids Board of Education sent a letter to the Kent ISD Board further highlighting questions and concerns and calling for an independent investigation. On October 30th, 2019, the Kent ISD Board Chair responded with responses to the questions, including a commitment to conduct an independent investigation into this situation. It is important that we acknowledge that the Kent ISD is accountable to us, the area school boards and district leaders. As local school board members, our role is to elect members of the Kent ISD. We also serve as the voting bodies to elect members of the Kent ISD Board. We were presented, we are also presented with and acknowledged their budget annually. I for one want to acknowledge the ISD's detailed response that they provided once these inquiries were made. We look forward to the findings of the independent audit and how processes will be improved moving forward. We will continue to brief the board and the community as this situation unfolds, but we wanted to be clear what our position was as a board and the understanding that we support transparency and accountability in these issues.
Do we have any comments or discussion around that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have public comment for non-agenda items.
We do. Rick Funk, Anne Swisher, if I pronounced that right, I'm sorry. Melissa Cortade, if you may come up. Just a reminder that if there is anyone present that is interested in giving public comment, we have two public comment sections in our agenda. The first one is public comment on board agendas. Agendas are located by the comment cards. A second opportunity is for commenting on non-agenda items. If there is a matter that you would like to speak on, you will need to fill out the public comment card located on the tables at the entry points. Please submit those cards to the board secretary or assistant, and then please read through our policy listed on the reverse side of the card. Individuals may be called to speak at the table to address the board during the subsequent public comment topic. I'll call you forward in order to comment, and then by the cards that have been received. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, and you'll need to state your full name before providing your comment. We will then start the timer at the beginning of the public comment time and provide you with one-minute notice by flagging a red card or indicating one minute remains. You'll need to complete your comment on time, and then upon notification, the three minutes have passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Funk, we will start with you.
My name is Rich Funk, and I'm here representing the Grand Rapids Education for Justice Group, and I am a retired teacher. We were here on October 7th to discuss what we feel has become a two-tiered system of education in Grand Rapids Public Schools. We see evidence of this two-tiered system cropping up around the nation. We saw it in the Chicago Teachers Education Association's strike recently, and also in an article published by The Atlantic entitled "An Attempt to Resegregate Little Rock of All Places." These are just two recent examples. Gary Orfield, a UCLA professor leading a 2019 civil rights project, is quoted as saying, "Segregation is expanding in almost all regions of the country. An elite segment of the population attends Tier One schools, in new or reconditioned state-of-the-art buildings, have access to advanced and current coursework, are exposed to alternate curriculums, have sufficient materials and supplies, provided a stable teaching staff with the resources necessary to ensure an excellent education. Roughly 80% or more of the students attend inferior and sometimes ill-equipped buildings, lack similar coursework and curriculums, lack sufficient materials and supplies, and are left with a limited number of full-time staff, and many of these classrooms are staffed with permanent substitutes. Typically, there are limited resources to provide the same level and quality of academic services." Mr. Hemhold, in addressing the press last time, felt data was taken out of context, but the results of the recent scores on NAP, as well as reviewing the district's scores on SAT and college readiness scores found on Michigan's Center for Educational Performance and Information website, seemed to refute those comments. While we agree some progress has been made, the data certainly tells a compelling story of the disparity, inequality, and segregation of students by color, academic ability, and student behavior and social-emotional development.
One minute.
One minute?
Yep.
We're not here to dispute, disrupt, demand the closing or elimination of the district's many magnet schools, academies, or theme schools. We're here to advocate for the 80% of the students that are being left behind by GRPS. We want to ensure that every student has an equal and equitable opportunity to receive the same quality of education and instruction afforded the Tier One schools. We want to ensure that every student and their parents are aware of the opportunities given in the Tier One schools and are notified, encouraged, and supported in the application process. We propose that GRPS students meeting the criteria for entrance be given first choice in admittance to these programs. School of Choice students should be considered only after all GRPS students have been placed in these programs. After all, it is the district of the Board of Education and the administration to serve the students residing within the district.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Swisher, and I'm a retired childcare worker from the Community Transition Campus Program. I'm also with Grand Rapids for Education Justice. We also want to ensure that the safety and well-being of the district's students are first and foremost when making policy and placement decisions surrounding the students attending GRPS. We are extremely concerned about the district's handling of students in GRPS who have displayed inappropriate and violent behavior in the Tier Two schools. There seems to be a lack of administrative support when dealing with these students, as well as transparency in recording and reporting the numerous incidences of these behaviors. We have been made aware of numerous situations where reports have been filed, but the data somehow lost. Students are frequently returned to the classroom with no support and no disciplinary plan. It's also been reported that teachers are being told not to report these incidents, and there have been repercussions and reprisals for teachers who have dared to report these extreme student behaviors. Tier One schools have very few, if any, behavior issues as the application process acceptance criteria insulates them from students with cognitive and/or behavioral issues. This is a situation that must be addressed and is one that is first and foremost on the minds of the educators and staff working in the two-tiered buildings. It has been brought to our attention that, excuse me, parent groups have been attempting to encourage the district to adopt a Brown Studies curriculum and a Native American curriculum in the district, but have been met with an unwillingness to consider their programs. As described by the parents and also looking at school data, the needs of the students are not being met, and the curriculum being adopted by the district has failed the district's students of color. These parent groups have presented programs in the data demonstrating their success in other areas of the country. They have been met with dismissal and told the district's curriculum experts should direct the district's...
One minute.
Thank you. Unfortunately, it appears that these experts have failed in this regard, and that failure can easily be seen in the district's scores, and when the data is disaggregated, the scores demonstrate poor performance of our students of color. Finally, when looking at the number of administrators and their compensation packages, we begin to question district spending. Using figures from the Kent ISD, district spends at least $250 more on administrative costs over all other districts in Kent County. This ranks them with the highest in Kent County. On the other hand, the district's educators and support staff are the lowest paid in Kent County. Perhaps if the district were more concerned and willing to pay competitive salaries to the GRPS staff, they would find it easier to recruit teachers and support staff, as well as retain that staff. This certainly would be a factor in the district's need to hire so many permanent substitutes to staff the district's classrooms.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Cortade. I'm actually a school board member myself at Kinnawa Hills Public Schools. And just real quickly, that idea of Cooperstown, and that just got me all excited, that's really cool. I like that. But anyways, I'll go on. Hi. The district and media has asked what we would propose to improve GRPS and ensure equity and equality for all students. We have several recommendations. One, establish a committee consisting of board members, administrators, teachers, union leadership, parents, and community members to visit each school in the district, spend a day or two, visit classrooms of each grade level or subject. After the visit, arrange a staff meeting to allow teachers, itinerant staff, and support staff to have an honest and frank discussion with the committee. Give them an opportunity to air their grievances, share success, and express their deepest concerns and frustrations. To ensure success and open dialogue, the district must give the staff in writing the promise that they may be open and honest, and that there will be no repercussions or retaliation on the part of the building district administrators. Discussions with district staff indicates that district staff feels, discussions with district staff indicates that district staff feels intimidated, threatened, admonished, and retaliated against... Kent County. Perhaps if the district were more concerned and willing to pay competitive salaries to the GRPS staff, they would find it easier to recruit teachers and support staff, as well as retain that staff. This certainly would be a factor in the district's need to hire so many permanent substitutes to staff the district's classrooms.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Cortade. I'm actually a school board member myself at Cudahy Hills Public Schools. And just real quickly, that idea of Cooperstown, and that just got me all excited. That's really cool. I like that. But anyways, I'll go on. The district and media has asked what we would propose to improve GRPS and ensure equity and equality for all students. We have several recommendations. One, establish a committee consisting of board members, administrators, teachers, union leadership, parents, and community members to visit each school in the district, spend a day or two, visit classrooms of each grade level or subject. After the visit, arrange a staff meeting to allow teachers, itinerant staff, and support staff to have an honest and frank discussion with the committee. Give them an opportunity to air their grievances, share success, and express their deepest concerns and frustrations. To ensure success and open dialogue, the district must give the staff in writing the promise that they may be open and honest, and that there will be no repercussions or retaliation on the part of the building district administrators. Discussions with district staff indicates that district staff feels-- Discussions with district staff indicates that district staff feels intimidated, threatened, admonished, and retaliated against if they challenged the building administrator or district administration. It is necessary to ensure a safe listening environment in order for this process to be successful. Two, we are requesting that district curriculums, textbooks, and materials are available and being used in every building in the district. There needs to be consistent math and reading programs, as well as intervention programs for struggling students. In the secondary, we would expect that the coursework in each of the subject fields would have access to the same and similar textbooks and materials, that expectations would be the same. Again, we would expect that support for interventions for struggling students would be available to all students with the same level of support and personnel.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Three, that the district accurately report and record all instances of consistent disruptive, inappropriate, or violent behavior reported by the district staff. We are not asking that the data be made public, but that it be consistently reported to the district administrators and complete records kept. We also feel that it is the district's responsibility to encourage teachers to report these incidents without fear reprisal or retaliation. Once reported, the district should be willing to meet with the teacher to discuss the incident, see if they are able to determine a cause, then work with the teacher and building administrator to determine a course of action to deal with a student in a clear, concise, timely, and consistent manner whenever the behaviors occur. I'm going to stop there. Seems like a good break.
Thank you. Tony Jacobs. Brenda Behrens, I'm sorry. Jack Prince.
My name is Tony Jacobs. My daughter attends GRPS at Grand Rapids Montessori High School, and I'm getting my own timer here so I can pace myself. I'm going to continue with what Melissa was saying before her time ran out.
We'll go on our time.
We have your time started.
Okay. This is in continuous recommendation number three, continuing. Students displaying these inappropriate or violent behaviors should not be returned to the classroom until a plan has been developed and the teacher and building administrator are able to quickly and effectively remove the student from the classroom to ensure the student, his peers, and the educators are safe and free from harm. Based on interaction with district staff, the district is slow in responding. Students are returned to the classroom without definitive plans. It takes several violent incidents before any real action is taken, and the district is reluctant to refer students for testing and provide alternate classrooms and programming for students displaying several outburst and violent behavior. Completing that recommendation, I just wanted to speak as a quick aside that I'm happy the school board is siding with Movimiento Cosecha in their driver's license for all campaign. And continuing here, recommendation number four. Class size has to be examined in the district. Citing GreatSchools.org, March 19, 2018, researchers have found that gains in achievement generally occur when class size is reduced to fewer than 20 students. While we understand that just reducing class size does not guarantee increased achievement, research does show the gains are strongest in the early grades and in areas where students come from disadvantaged backgrounds.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
According to GreatSchools.org, a recent study published in the American Journal of Public Health revealed that reducing class size in the elementary schools is more cost-effective than public health and medical interventions. Their research found that students in smaller classrooms are more likely to graduate from high school. Researchers indicate that class size reduction in the early grades provides greater chances of individual interaction with a teacher, resulting in greater academic achievement. They also found that class size reduction provides a better morale, reducing anxiety, and making the teacher feel less overwhelmed with meeting the needs of their students. The Tier Two students in GRPS are in desperate need of class size reduction. The buildings housing Tier Two students generally have a much larger population, a more diverse population, and large numbers of students coming from disadvantaged backgrounds. Children of color, students with lower cognitive ability, and--
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Behrens. I'm a parent of a student that recently graduated from Grand Rapids Public, and I'm going to continue with recommendation number four. Class size is an issue that must be addressed by the district as they expect students to meet district and state standards and outcomes. With each of these suggestions, it is our recommendation to the district, sit down with educators, support staff, to openly and honestly discuss the results of these findings, looking for common threads or causes prioritizing the course of action. Educators must be an integral part of developing a course of action and developing curriculum that better meets the needs of our Tier Two students. In conclusion, we feel strongly that the two-tiered system does promote segregation, leaving Tier Two students with much more diverse population. Overall, the students in Tier Two schools are more disadvantaged and require far more support academically, as well as socially and emotionally. With the current system of magnet-themed charters, academies, and application process and academic requirements, the district has segregated the best and the brightest from the ranks. Moving forward, it is important to consider this basic fact, and when determining staffing levels and resources that may be given priority consideration. Overall, we are asking for an equal and equitable education for all Grand Rapids Public School students.
My name is Jack Prince. I'm a retired teacher and coach. We're not here to be combative. If it was our goal to be combative or sarcastic, we would have done that after our lawyer recommended that we should take this district to court over its failure to legally respond to our many FOIA requests. On the contrary, we came in a spirit of cooperation. We're here tonight in that same spirit. We presented empirical data and asked pertinent and professional questions related to educational problems in this district. Those questions were asked on October 7th, and they remain unanswered, even though we left phone numbers for each and every presenter that sat at this table on the 7th. We still expect those answers to come from academic officials within the district. Here are just a few of the points that were presented that were summarily spurned, rejected, and classified in some cases as lies. Number one, we were accused by the communication director of not taking the time to meet with school officials before our board appearance, when in fact, we met on four occasions, twice with the superintendent, once with the school lawyer, twice with Mr. John Helmuth. Number two, that 95% of Ottawa Hill graduates are academically not prepared for college admittance. That data is provided by GreatSchools.org and was challenged via EMLI. That service also adds the following warning. The Ottawa Hills school is far below the state average in key measures of college and career readiness. Number three, that over 7,000 students tested in GRPS with the all-important M-Step reading test had 75% of 3rd through 8th grade students flunk in 2017. That data was provided by EMLI, Brian McVicker, 2018. That the two-tiered schools have classrooms unattended because of the inability to find subs at a rate of 30% in the lower-tier schools. While the top-tier schools have 98% of their classes covered with subs, that information was supplied by your own FOIA FOIA release. Number five, that GRPS is the highest-paid administrators in Kent County. With a question posed right here, how do you justify this when having teachers at near the bottom pay scale in Kent County? That evidence is in my hand and was compiled at the Kent ISD. I welcome anybody to approach me after the meeting. I'll gladly give one of these to you. This is not the first time it's been on this table. We are tired of our serious concerns being dismissed under a bogus attack of our data veracity via the administration having the last word with the media. We therefore are announcing our continued FOIA research to the media in this room with such examples as, number one, where do the millions of business and DeVos dollar donations end up? Number two, we want to see the privatized and paid-for curriculum that's going to be instilled at Ottawa Hills slated for the bevy of academies. Number three--
Thank you.
That's three minutes? Thank you, and I think Mr. MacArthur said we shall return.
Carla Barberi?
Oops. Mom was on here, sorry. Thank you. My name is Carla Barberi. I'm originally from Guatemala. I volunteer at Movimiento Cosecha, and I just want to thank you for standing with us today. It shows that you care and you love our community, and I really will also like to thank John for such a beautiful introduction. I truly believe in education. I'm passionate about education, and with a humble heart, I just want to share with you that, to me, education is a priority. And I don't know these people. I never heard of Grand Rapids for Education Justice before, but I do stand with a lot of things that they say. I have two children, and when my kids were little, I wanted to do the best that I could for them. I found I wanted them to be successful, and I signed them up for extracurricular activities, soccer, sports, piano, ballet, all kinds of instruments, because I wanted them to be successful. And after so many years, and I volunteered in every school that they went, first they went to a Christian private school, but then I saw how horrible they were. And my husband and I decided to send them to public school because we believe in public school. We thought that they had better chances there, and they did. I have a daughter that attends her second year at Harvard University, and I have a son that was accepted into University of Michigan with a presidential scholarship. And the reason my children got there is because they had opportunities when they were little, when they grew up, and the children in the community don't have that opportunity. Many of you are planning vacations for Thanksgiving, maybe go and visit families in other states for Christmas. Our families don't have that. Our children can't go to Disney World. Our children can't even go to Six Flags, or-- I have a mom that her child needs 24 hours, seven hours, I mean, seven days a week medical care. She can't even drive to Walgreens to get medication, so-- I'm just going to say something that's going to throw you off. Calentat tut, calentat how, hin, sukin kush, our hat suke kush. My country, Guatemala, we have 21 different dialects. I was reading what it says here that you have neglected the minority in the schools. I truly believe that. Guatemalan, there is a lot of Guatemalans in your school district, and you fell in them big time. I want to invite you, you know there is Radio La Poderosa? Please reach out to them in their language. Many of the people in my community, they hardly speak Spanish. They understand more of a dialect, and you fell in them. You talked to them about email. That lady that was saying how you're going to introduce new technology that people have-- Anyways, you fell in them. I am so sorry. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Superintendent's comments?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
It's hard to be quiet. There are so many pressing needs. Segregation, it exists. We know that. And this board, just like we take on other issues, we have a big job to do, and I think that we have to lead. You know, we were born here not just to spend time. We were elected here not just to satisfy our egos, but rather to make a difference. And I think that many of the issues that we have to deal with, including the equity and performance and outcomes for all of our children, I think that has to continue to be at our forefront, and I know it is. It is with every one of you, and I respect each and every one of you for the commitment and the passion that you have. And so I hope that going forward, we are able to tackle some of these issues and really accept who we are and where we are in this point in time. We are not a perfect district. We want to be as perfect as possible, and I hope that we'll work collectively to reach those goals and advance our educational performance for all children, and do that in Godspeed. You know, I remember when I was Director of bilingual education, and I said, you know, the community is changing. We have Guatemalan students, and they speak, they don't speak Spanish. They speak Mam and Kon Hoval, and I see them in my grocery store, and I interact with them. And they didn't get it. That was 15, 20 years ago. So many of my colleagues in education have been slow to move, and I apologize for that, but you know, I'm sure that we're on track and that our passion will lead.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Flores for all of his words. Appreciate it.
Ms. Davis?
I just want to say that I'm really excited about the fact that policy, our legislative committee brought that tonight. And I want to just say to the public that it's very exciting at the committee meetings and at our retreats and in our interactions with each other. I really feel that this board is thinking with an equity lens, and we're learning a lot, and we're not all on the same page on all the issues, but I do have a lot of faith in every board member that is on our board, and I feel like we're moving in the right direction. So know that we hear you, and some things take longer than others, but we are listening, and we are trying to use an equity lens whenever we possibly can.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
An emphatic ditto. No other comment.
Ms. Shaki?
Same. No comment.
Ruben Matias?
Yeah, I think it's exciting when our parents can come in front of us and express their concerns and know that we're working at it, both from the top down and all in between. And so that's really critical, to be able to sit here on this side and then talk with our administrators and principals, and then you as parents as well. So just know that we are working and we're on your side. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
No comment.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm a member of the academic committee, and I am very aware of the kinds of things that we need to do to improve schools and so on, but I know there's a huge financial burden that we're not going to be able to meet, but I also know that-- I'm always impressed when I come to not only these meetings, but maybe even especially the academic committee meetings that we have, because people are really finding out, trying to find out, what we can do to make things better, to help all of our kids. There's, you know, there's no purpose for any of us to be on this school board unless we are here to help the kids. And I can assure all of you that my experiences with these folks on this school board have been nothing but positive when it comes to what is best for kids.
Thank you. I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We appreciate the community's participation in this process. We will never say that everything is perfect in our district. We strive every day to improve, but things are constantly changing at the same time. The needs are changing. It's amazing to see our state government acknowledging that more funding is needed, but more does not mean enough. So we are constantly working. The administration does such an amazing job to try to stretch every dollar, but we know that more work has to be done. With that being said, I would like to also say that there are so many issues that need to be addressed in our district that we also don't have to sensationalize or create issues or data or facts that are not accurate, because there is so much work for us to do. It doesn't need a wow effect to add more to that. Our administration, I'll take the board out of it, our administration-- Our administration, I'll take the board out of it, our administration, our teachers, our cabinet work so hard that that goes against the work that they do when we take away from that with things that are not correct or true. So I appreciate when you bring things to our attention. The things that we know need to be done, or the things that are new to us that are correct, we take that. We do our research. We go back, and we are constantly striving to do better. So thank you for that. I look forward to having partners and allies in the work, because that is what's best for our children, not creating divisions. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.